Seven oh one P M. And our next item of business is action from executive session, which is to discuss the superintendent's recommendation for the Director of Business and Support Services position and to act as appropriate. Susan?
Well, thank you, Carrie. Yes, we make a recommendation, Dr. Maestis has made the recommendation to hire Ayesha Nelson Opong as the Director of Business and Support Services.
A little bit about the process. There was an interview team that consisted of administration, school committee members, a town representative, and two candidates emerged as finalists. The finalists had virtual interviews with the incoming superintendent, Dr. Adams. An interview was held with the central office administrators and support staff, and the feedback was all very positive. It was strong feedback from anybody who interacted with her. Ayesha is a former employee in the central office as well. She held the position of Assistant to the Director of Business and Support Services, John Ferris. She's certified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as a school business administrator. She's a resident of Hingham. She's actively involved in the Hingham community. Her corporate experience, noted on her resume that's in everybody's packet, combined with her prior municipal experience in the Hingham Public School District, makes her the ideal candidate for the position. And we thank you for considering this recommendation.
Thank you. And thank you for leading the process and to everyone on the screening committee. It was very thorough. Does anyone have anything to add? Or somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To enter negotiations with Ayesha Nelson Opong for the Director of Business and Support Services position.
One second.
Thanks, Ness. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Well, welcome, Ayesha, and thank you again for your help with this. So four point one is approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March twenty first, 2022. We're going to hold on these until the next, our next meeting. Number five is questions and comments. And I first want to thank our partners at Harbor Media for allowing us to stream this through YouTube tonight. If anyone is out watching this virtually, either on TV or on the Internet, and you have a question or comment, you can, you can type it in, and Ness is monitoring the comments for us. So thank you. So that being said, the Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we've set up aside up to fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts general laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and, three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all of that being said, if anyone has a question who's in the audience, we'll go here first. Any comments? Okay. Seeing none? Do we have anything online?
I do. So I have a comment from Sean Gavin. It says, I know seniors' last day of classes is May twenty fourth. Senior last day picnic is May twenty fifth. Senior awards night, May thirty first. Senior prom, June second, and graduation, June fourth. My questions are as follows. One, will senior athletic awards night stay May twenty fifth, or will it be combined with the awards and scholarship on May thirty first? And two, in the event of rain, will senior, will Hingham High graduation on Saturday, June fourth, at ten a.m. be delayed to five P. M., or will there be a rain date of Sunday, June fifth, at ten a.m., or as late as five P. M.? He also noted numerous other schools are doing rain dates for graduation for a third year in a row.
Okay, thank you for the question. It's not, it's not really, it was in the purview of the school committee, so I would just encourage Sean to reach out to the high school, and Principal Swanson will have the answers to those questions. Anything else?
None.
Okay, great. Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Maestis is out of town on family business, so he is not here tonight to give that. Is there any update from central office that you know of? No? Okay. All right, thank you. Communications, seven point one is student communications. Elijah?
So I have a few smaller things. I mentioned last time, the senior class that our officers organized that drive for the Sunflowers Peace Charity, the final total for that was thirteen, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which is a lot more than I thought it was last time. So that's wonderful. This coming Tuesday is the National Honor Society induction ceremony, which I'm sure most of you are already aware of, which is an important moment to acknowledge the commitment to academic and moral excellence that the school has encouraged, this district has encouraged. And finally, on another GSA update, on April thirteenth, because the National Day of Silence is a sort of celebration, not really a celebration, an acknowledgement where students across the country take a vow of silence to symbolically represent the oppression that those in the LGBT community have endured for so long. Because the actual Day of Silence is the twenty second, which is on our school vacation week, that has been moved to next Wednesday, April thirteenth. And this is less directed at all of you, because I know you probably have meetings that day, but I, just the general public and the people watching, if you can, I don't know where the camera is, but just on behalf of the entire school, the entire school community, I'd just like to encourage everyone to be respectful of the concept.
Thank you very much. So communications received by the superintendent, I don't think we have any. Seven point three is other communications. Does anyone have any, anything they want to share? Okay. Eight point one, unfinished business to receive an update on the Foster and East Elementary School principal searches. I can, there was a communication that went out to the community, and we're delighted to welcome Matthew Shifely, I think, to the Foster School. He's a really experienced administrator. Everyone's really excited to have him join. The East School search has been going along on the prepared timeline, and last Wednesday, two candidates came and met with all the stakeholders. They met with the parents in the morning, and then with staff, and with the central office staff, and went through that process. And I mean, hopefully, we'll have some news soon. But they were both, I went to the parent meet and greet, and they're both extremely qualified, really would be lucky to have either one of them. So I think it was, it was great to see. So good job to that, that screening committee. Next is a strategic plan update. So a survey went out to the community and got a good response from a variety of stakeholders. We really tried to reach out to not just parents and staff, but also to community members, to grandparents, to, to students. And it sounds like we got a really good cross section. So Dr. Maestis is working with teaching and learning associates to put together a report, and the Strategic Plan Committee will be meeting this Wednesday at four o'clock to start working on that moving up. So that's going along well, too. Eight point three is to discuss the 2022-2023 school year calendar and act as appropriate. Unfortunately, we don't have, this is, this is our second read, or third read, I think, of the calendar. We don't have an administrator here to speak to this, but I did talk to Dr. Maestis over the weekend, and he said he had mentioned, he'd spoken with June Gustafson from the HGA about some of their concerns with some of the proposed changes to the calendar. And he is recommending that we choose option B, which would put the first day of school on Tuesday, September sixth, and that, you know, we're really looking forward to working with the HGA to, to kind of transition any proposed changes in that, so it's seamless for everybody involved. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. I'll do my best to answer them if we do.
Is it option B?
So, sorry, could, could you just come to the microphone? Thanks.
June Gustafson, HGA president.
Thank you.
Is it option B, the calendar with the changes?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep. But we want to work with you, moving forward, to make sure that everyone's, you know, it's as seamless as possible. So.
You do realize it's a change of working conditions for some of our members?
I, I realize it's a change in, in how things are done.
Okay. I just want to make people aware of that.
Okay. Thank you. Eight point four is to, sorry. Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Lauren DeVala, ninety-eight, Black Rock Drive. Does it indicate on any of the drafts which day kindergarten's starting?
Um, yes, let's see. Here we go. You know, I don't think this does have that.
I didn't see it either, which is why I was going to flag it for you.
Yep. No, definitely. Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah.
In the past, obviously, they've started a few days after
Right.
the older kids. And I would, as a kindergarten parent currently and a future one, I would encourage starting midweek.
Yep.
The open houses take place generally before the staff starts back or during.
Mm-hmm.
And then their first day of school ends up being a week or two later. So for a five-year-old, it's often confusing.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
It sure was tricky with starting three weeks later and on a Monday. So I definitely hope that you take that into consideration on the next draft.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Okay. All right, we'll pass that on to the administrators. Okay, eight point four is, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting to check in with you. Have anything online?
I can check in. I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks. All right. Eight point four is to hear a budget update.
I actually was going to take us through this.
Great.
So if I can combine eight point four and eight point five.
Terrific.
So the eight point five is to hear finance capital subcommittee updates. We had a finance subcommittee meeting this afternoon at five, had gone through a number of things with John Ferris, and I wanted to update the committee on it. We had been hearing about this amount in the budget that we needed to work with, this one point seven dol, seven million dollars possible excess. Talking through that with John, nine hundred thousand of that relates to ESER funds. So ESER funds don't have to be used in the current year. We actually have two different years that we can use that. We have about two hundred thousand dollars that has to be used by June thirty, twenty twenty-three, and then another seven hundred thousand that has to be used by twenty twenty-four. So, so if you remove the nine hundred thousand from the one point seven, we're actually looking at eight hundred thousand that could possibly be excess. And I just want to remind everybody, it's not really that it's excess. We are in the right process of the budget during this period of time, and it's things that, it's normal course. So John had gone through and told people who had things that they hadn't yet ordered, because the sphere has been kind of chaotic, and they hadn't been ordering some of their things, to go ahead and do that, make sure that they're getting in the things that they had previously planned for and budgeted. So he actually thinks that that eight hundred thousand has been worked down between textbooks and curriculum, and then there were some capital items that have been ordered. So he doesn't think we are going to have any of that eight hundred thousand dollars remaining. So by fiscal twenty-two, we will have used all of the funds that are not related to ESER, which then brings us to the ESER funds, which are things that, monies that we can use as part of the schools going forward. And we had talked in the finance subcommittee, we're trying to identify one-time items that could be applied to ESER. We could use it for anything, any purposes, but we don't necessarily want to hire positions that could then trail off two years from now when we no longer have ESER funds. So we were trying to identify one-time items with that nine hundred thousand. And we've got some things that were being asked for in fiscal twenty-three that we had identified that are really one-time. There's the assessment PD that was about eighteen. There's the assessment tool of fifty, and there were the sped vans of twenty-six. So that gets us to about ninety-four thousand that we could use that's one time. So if we are removing that from what our asks were, we had about eight hundred thousand dollars in asks, the remainder of that fiscal twenty-three budget, we would need to try to figure out how to address. So we had voted on a budget. Advisory and the Select Board had voted on a budget as well, and it did not include all of our added positions. When we spoke today, normal course of business, there are retirements that we know about. And when a retirement happens, it's usually a higher-paid position, somebody who has been here for a while, they retire, and we are able to replace that higher-paid position with a, somebody coming into education. So usually, there are some savings there. And John has identified retirements that have happened, and that is in the amount of about three hundred and sixty thousand. So we know for fiscal twenty-three that we've got an additional three hundred and sixty thousand that would be part of our normal budget that we could use for other positions. So the finance and capital subcommittee was going through and identifying what we think might be priorities. And I think we've heard loud and clear from the community and from ourselves that the Fine Arts Director is a must. So we were just kind of rank ordering those things. We know that the central office staff needs to be addressed. There are some holes in there. So we thought that the central office staff would be the next item of priority. So that would get us to, there was the hundred and twenty for the Fine Arts Director, and then about two hundred and fifteen for central office people. So those two together get us to what we know are the retirements that are coming. So we could, we know that we can cover those right now with the budget that we currently have. John suspects there might be one or two other retirements coming, but as he tells us, they don't have to tell us until June thirtieth. So we suspect that they, that might shake out as well, and that will allow us to fund the additional positions that we wanted to hire. So with all of that said, I was going to propose that we discuss the priority levels of the budget, to see whether you concur with what we had discussed in the finance subcommittee, so that when town meeting does happen, we know in what order we want to hire these positions. And then, given that, given that, we had a higher budget, we had the sixty-two million, but suspect we will be able to hire the positions that we wanted with the sixty-one million that had been voted on by AdCom and Select Board. So I would propose that we talk in a future meeting to see whether we revote that number. Another part of our finance subcommittee was to look at revolving funds. So you guys might remember, a couple years ago, we had gone through this process to look at our revolving funds. We had documented how it is being used and what we typically like to see at the end of the year. There are certain balances that we know we need to have balances, like food services. We know we need to have three months' worth of running expenses to cover how they manage their, the food service department. One of the ones, you know, for example, is athletic fees. And we had said at the time that we liked to have about two hundred thousand dollars left in the athletic fees. We wanted to try to use that amount for the future need for the turf replacement. At the end of June thirty, twenty twenty-one, we had well over the two hundred thousand. And the reason for that is because of this one-time monies that we have received from the government. So typically, we'd see the two hundred thousand, but it's well in excess of that. What John has done in our budget, and you would have seen, he is using more of that revolving for fiscal twenty-three's budget and applying it to our operating. But we are still at a higher balance than we normally would be. So we had talked about proposing, taking some of that revolving funds and using it to help out some other things. And one of the suggestions was putting it towards the tennis courts. And I know there's a current warrant underway for that, but we would apply maybe three hundred thousand dollars of our balance towards that tennis courts, so that we don't have to use as much in the town's fund balance. There are a couple other revolving funds that we're still working through with John. There is the, I'm going to pull it, pull up my detail, the field use that has about two hundred thousand as well. So even if we were to use the athletic fee and use three hundred thousand dollars of that, we'd still have two hundred thousand dollars of the field use revolving to apply to a turf in future years. The field use is something that we used to collect on, but that, those transactions now move to the rec. department when they took that over. So we still have that amount that we could apply to a turf field in the future. So those are some of the ideas that were coming out of our finance subcommittee, and we thought we would bring it to the full committee and discuss.
Thank you for that, David. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Did you want to do this tonight, or you want to?
We.
Sorry, could I just ask everyone to silence their phones, please? Thanks.
We don't have to act as appropriate, so we wouldn't be able to vote
Okay.
a budget tonight, revote a budget number tonight, but we could certainly talk through where people see priorities.
Okay. I guess I, I agree with your, the priorities. I guess I'd want to actually see it typed out, to keep track of it. And we're, I guess I'm putting the money towards the tennis courts, where we asked by the town to offer that up, or do we have other capital items for athletics or other things that, that we have to address?
In the current five-year, are there anything, is there anything else that's in athletics?
The track.
We.
Wait, the track, the track would be one, but.
But that's the track or the tennis courts, I mean, it's just an acceleration of the use of the money. And then when we get to the track, it would be, if we had some field revolving, we could use some of that money towards that. But then the town would have to pay for the rest. So it's, it's more of a, here's, the three hundred thousand dollars, you can use that now with the fund balance, and, you know, later on, the revenues are going to have to come from somewhere else. It seems like a good project to, you know, to use that, that money for.
Yeah, some of those courts are unplayable.
Oh, the, I mean, the courts do have to be replaced, and we were all sort of in agreement that it should go. I like the idea that, you know, fund balance is funding it because the town has to work their fund balance as well. But, you know, to the extent that a contribution from the school department of some three hundred thousand dollars goes there, that, that, you know, we said, you know, there's not, we're pulling back the ESER. We plan to use the ESER for our own purposes. So, you know, it, it helps maintain the fund balance level that they were looking for. So I, I thought it was a good idea.
That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd just say, you were talking about sort of if we decide to revote our number at a future meeting, and I guess I'd encourage us to do so, just because I think it's, there's often disagreement between AdCom and school committee. There's not often discord, with sort of where I, I think, sort of have, proposing two different numbers creates the impression that there's this major rift and discord between the two committees. And I don't want to, I just want to be clear about, any two committees will often disagree on things, but I think as a town, we are coming together. I don't know if, you know.
Yeah, I, I just think it'd be good conversation to have for, for when it is on, comes up on the agenda, and we could all
Yes.
deliberate and discuss it.
Absolutely. I wasn't saying, discuss it now, I was just saying.
I, I have, would like to go through that thought process with everyone on the committee.
No, I, I like the idea of revoting it, too, if, as, as long as we can make it work. And it sounds like there's a path forward that you've identified, so.
I think there is a path forward.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's, we, we need to present a balanced budget, and I think we can present a balanced budget and lead all the priorities that the school committee has.
Yeah, great. And I guess I'd be, also be in favor of using the three hundred for the tennis courts, too, because we have it. And I'm a big believer in if, you know, the people that put the money in should see the benefits of it. And so rather than sitting on it for years, it seems like it makes sense. Okay, so you want me to add this to the agenda for the twenty-fifth, and, and make it so we can vote? Is that, is everyone good with that?
We should do it before town.
Yeah, right. Of course. Okay, is there anything online?
I just checked, nothing that I see.
Okay.
No legislative question.
Yeah.
Would that be, if we did?
Revote it, would that be like an insert that they could put into the warrant? Because I know they've already got to print.
They probably could. I'll find out. Yeah. Okay. All right. Anyone in the room have any thoughts or questions or comments on the budget? No? Okay. All right. Next is to discuss proposed amendments to Hingham Public Schools Policy, Section D, Fiscal Management. This is the first read of our proposed changes, so we won't be acting on this tonight. But John, could you take us through?
So everyone should have a copy in their folder of, just pull up my notes. All right. So we undertook a full review of the policy, Section D, which is fiscal policies. This was a recommendation to MASC. And just two things, I just want to emphasize that in undertaking the review, the following principles were prioritized, which was ensuring that the policy language is aligned with the constitutional legal principles of school funding, and also confirming that the policy remains focused on the legal authorities of the school committee. And then I'm just going to go through each one, just to, so you know, just to highlight what we did change, starting with, I just lost my notes again. Okay, so starting with the fiscal management goals, we added, and under the committee's intent, the paragraph about centering equity while achieving the greatest educational returns and the greatest contributions to the educational program in relation to dollars expended. And then in the next one, the next policy, which would fall under annual budget, the six, I'm sorry, the, the fourth paragraph down is new, as well as the sixth paragraph, those were added as well. And I will go through the copy that everyone has, and I will highlight all those paragraphs so that you can look for it for the next read. I didn't get to it today. So the next thing is under the budget development process, we added in the sixth and seventh paragraph. And then on the budget development process, I'm sorry, the budget deadlines and schedules, that is the same. There is no changes to that. And then the budget adoption procedures, this is completely new, this whole policy. And it just talks about revenue sources and authority for adoption. And then the next one would be budget transfer authority. There were some typos that I added on. And then it is the fourth and fifth paragraph that are new. And this talks more language around cost centers. The cost centers are the, like, the line items that we see in the budget, like administration, school committee, leadership, those are the cost centers. And then the next one would be funding proposals and applications. That is, there are no changes to that one, and no changes to federal funds, no changes to authorized signatures or bonded employees and officers, nor fiscal accounting or reporting. Those stay the same. And no changes under revolving funds, and, or audits. I think the next, the only one that they have changes for, that was it? And again, I'll highlight all those, so you guys can go back and look at those.
And if anyone's especially eager, I sent the, the Google Doc, so you can track the, you can see the history, so you can see what we've, the policy is subcommittee- change, you can see the history, so you can see what we've wrote, the policy a subcommittee discussed. And the finance subcommittee took a look at those, too, right?
We're in the process of. We didn't, we didn't have a second read of it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Move it here.
Right.
That makes sense, okay. All right, so we can put this on for the twenty-fifth as well?
The draft form, or do we do that prior? If we wanted to put it for people to review, or just leave it?
Oh, we can do that. If you want to, do, do you want to put this one up there?
I can do that.
Okay.
Let's fix a couple typos.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Subcommittee and project reports. So why don't we start with Tim?
Sure. A couple of things. Office hours are going to come back on the eleventh, which is a week from tonight. Done with Jen and Michelle, who's not here tonight. So, awesome, do you know, is that seven to eight? Do you know if you decided on a time?
We have not decided on a time.
Okay.
But I don't think we would go with what we, typically it was seven thirty.
Seven thirty to nine, okay.
High school.
High school, okay. So we'll work with how to make sure announcements get out about that. The Hingham Educational Foundation, a couple of big thing, big things happening. The first big thing happening is they've completely relaunched their website, so if you have not gone on the Hingham Education Foundation's website in the last sort of week and a half, go on that, it's completely redone, it's awesome. Part of, and three, I'm leading with that, is part of the new website is the new grant applications. So the grants are going to be due on April twenty-fifth, any teachers can fill out their grant requests, and those are going to be, I think, May eleventh is the date that their HEF is meeting to go over all the grant requests, but they're going to be due on the twenty-fifth, so. Okay, and then on April thirtieth, they're having their nineteen twenties Spring Bash over at the South Shore Country Club. Tickets are still available, but they're going fast, so I think they will be gone soon if you don't get them soon. So go, another reason to go on their brand-new website and buy your tickets and all that, so lots of great HEF stuff. Switching gears over to CPAC, they had a great speaker on March twenty-eighth, Sarah Ward gave a presentation on executive function, and they've been very busy with lots of irons in the firearm, and I think we'll, not, not ready for announcements, a lot of them yet, but lots of stuff happening. I know they are going to do a candidates forum with the Hingham Unity Council, sort of co-hosting it, so I think they're still working on a date for that.
So we had our first capital facilities master plan meeting on March twenty-third, it went really well, and then we have, have our next meeting this Wednesday, and then policy met on March twenty-fourth, and I need to schedule our next meeting.
The only other thing is that I have some signed ones in the packet, so.
Salary negotiations will be meeting soon to talk about the contract for the business director and for the principals, and a couple other items. And wellness will be meeting, we hope, sometime next week, to review a list of recommendations we have for the athletic department to begin addressing regarding equity, and also hopefully getting a final report on the booster groups' spending, so we have to schedule that.
Yep. I would just mention that the PRS School Council is meeting on Monday, next Monday, at two forty-five, and the PRS PTO, their next meeting is May eleventh at eight thirty at, in person at PRS. So next is number eleven, other items is may not reasonably known forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have anything? Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, all right, motion is adjourned at seven thirty-three.